Opening up, you went out live, and you say, "We'll be at 10."
We just keep hearing these waves of laughter from the town hall. Just make sure you don't say one of our names right before you start laughing.
Barbara's cracking jokes.
I can't help it. That's what they hired for, really. Nothing to do with my brain.
I say bring back the auto type.
Oh, isn't that, but that was a good one. I was sitting there laughing, man. I was reading it.
Hello there. Speaking of, speaking of grandfathers, here's my grandfather in nineteen, nineteen twenty-four, when he was nineteen years old, way out west. That's his mother.
Wow, great.
Wow. Where in, where in the West?
In Lone Pine, California, in the Owens Valley. Yeah, so he was, he lived in Whittier, California, and he went, spent his, spent time up there because he had emphysema or something, and the high and dry was a good thing for him. But he was only nineteen then, so I think he was just cutting up. I don't think he was ever a cowboy.
You don't know that, though, Gary, do you?
Well, yes, I do, actually. He went on to be a very successful electronics engineer. And, and, well, I don't know, maybe he was a cowboy at that, for those few days and weeks and months that he worked up to.
That's right.
My grandpa, my gramps. Cowboy gramps.
All right, I think, are we, are we good? Mr. Roberts, give me the thumbs up from the back of the room. Thank you, Mr. Roberts.
That's not a phone.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our, our April twelfth Town Council meeting. Before we begin tonight, if we could take a, stand for our pledge allegiance and a moment of silence for our men and women bringing harms way. Thank you all. Okay. And before we get started, just a little bit of housekeeping. For those of you calling in tonight on a cellphone, star nine to indicate you have a question, or indicate you raising your hand, star six will allow you to mute and unmute the phone. If you're on the web and you indicate you raised a hand, when called upon, please state your name and address for the town clerk. And if we could now go to our roll call.
Here.
Ms. Abbott?
Yeah.
Mr. Buttermeyer?
Here.
Mr. Hamilton?
Here.
Mr. Callen?
Here.
Here.
Here. Thank you all. President's executive, sir. I'd like to take a moment, and on behalf of the Town Council, I'd like to pass along our condolences to the family of Peter McIntyre. Mr. McIntyre was a longtime resident of the town of Portsmouth, and served on the Portsmouth Town Council from two thousand and ten. I'd like to ask Mr. Hamilton to take, to say a few words. Mr. Hamilton had the pleasure of serving with Mr. McIntyre on the Town Council in two thousand and eight.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, Peter was a great man. He did a really nice job. He cared deeply about the town and making sure that everything was followed and done correctly. He actually helped get me into politics, so maybe there's some of you out there who might hold a grudge against him for that, but he was a great man. He's sorely missed. He cared deeply about the town, as I said. He actually was instrumental in getting the Portsmouth Concerned Citizens going. And it served as a watchdog, and still does, but Mr. is very upset to hear about his passing.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Okay, moving on, we have our, our consent agenda. We have bills and pedlar license renewals. Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion and second. In favor?
Mr. Jufusa?
Hi.
Ms. Abbott? Mr. Buttermeyer?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Mr. Aguirre?
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we'll be sitting as the Board of License Commissioners. First item is a request advertised for a public hearing, application for Class B liquor license for KJK LLC doing business as Thriving Tree Coffee House, seven oh six Park Ave. I believe our, the public hearing could occur on May twenty-fourth, would occur on May twenty-fourth.
Motion to hold the public hearing.
Go ahead, Mrs. Jufusa.
No, that's fine. I'll, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Second. All those in favor?
Mr. Jufusa?
Hi.
Ms. Abbott? Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Mr. Aguirre?
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you all.
Move to adjourn as the Board of License Commissioners.
All those in favor?
Mr. Jufusa?
Hi.
Ms. Abbott? Mr. Buttermeyer?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Hi.
Mr. Aguirre?
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we have minutes, minutes of our Town Council meeting on March twenty-second, and executive.
Move to approve is presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Mr. Jufusa?
Hi.
Ms. Abbott?
Hi.
Mr. Buttermeyer?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Mr. Aguirre?
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. Okay. Next, we have our Town Administrator's Report. Mr. Rayner?
Mr. President, a notice of council, ladies and gentlemen. With respect to COVID, Rhode Islanders ages forty and older reannounced COVID vaccination appointments. In the state, still aims to open up to all residents sixteen and over by next month. As a reminder, Rhode Islanders can pre-register by signing up for the vaccine interest notification list. That can be done via the portal dot ri dot gov website. New appointments for state-run sites will be posted on Tuesday mornings at nine AM. On April twenty-sixth, after the April school break, schools may reduce the distance between students to three feet from six feet, and childcare centers may return to one hundred percent capacity. However, as a reminder, masks will still be required, and more COVID information is available via the town's website. Regarding to our working relationship with the SNAP network, the SNAP Network Climate Resiliency Planning and Financing Project will kick off this Thursday. We will discuss the overview of technical services and project calls presented to demonstrate existing resilience tools and resources, address key resilience capacity questions, and then review the project timeline. As I reported previously, this project is intended to help guide a Portsmouth-specific, resiliency-focused capital improvement plan, which will be ready for review at the end of the year. And with regard to our, our request for a road safety assessment, Chief Peters had been notified by the Rhode Island Department of Transportation that they have accepted our request, and they anticipate beginning the process for this safety assessment of West Main Road later this month or early next month. I'll keep the council informed as I learn more. Additionally, for the past twenty-one years, Portsmouth has participated in the Armenian National Committee of Rhode Island's program to have the Armenian flag raised in memory of the Armenian genocide. We have been asked again to fly the Armenian flag to the council chambers from April twenty-fourth to April twenty-sixth. On this ad, I know remember Mr. McIntyre, and I'm sure he was a great guy. I've heard a lot about him, and he must have been a great guy. He was a retired Master Chief United States Navy. And that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Rayner. Okay, and that's, that's excellent news about the road safety assessment for West Main Road. Again, it, it's, it's something that we think will help down the road, but that is good news. Onto resignations and appointments. First is the Civic Development Committee. It's the resignation of Fred Morano.
Move to accept. Seconded.
Like stereo.
All those in favor?
Mr. Jufusa?
Hi.
Ms. Abbott? Mr. Buttermeyer?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Mr. Aguirre?
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, on to whole business. First item, it's Solid Waste Recycling Committee Recommendations. Ted, Ted on board? Analysts? No?
My audio coming through now.
Oh, there, there we go. We got you. All right. Good evening.
So I guess I'll just get started, and if, if anyone has any question, maybe just ask them after the bullet point. Well, thank you for inviting me back to the Town Council to follow up on some of their solid waste and recycling committee recommendations. We, we had a pretty lengthy meeting. It was a three-hour meeting back in March, so I want to commend the committee for their dedication on researching the topic to bring forward the recommendation to you tonight. So I'll just jump right into it. So composting is an idea or indeed that we have identified that could be a limit? The amount of solid waste being generated to town enforcement, some estimate, or maybe thirty to forty percent of predictable solid waste, the tonnage, is actually through scrap, and some of them.
Mr. Bites, can you, can you hold on a second? This is a really tough echo. I, I don't know if other folks are getting it.
Yeah, it might be on my side. Is the echo gone, or?
I don't know.
I'm not hearing it now.
Yeah, I think, yeah, thank you for jumping in. I couldn't tell.
Okay. All right, so, yeah, you can continue. Thank you.
Okay, I'm just gonna back off. Is, is the audio okay now?
Yes, yep.
Okay, thank you for letting me know. So, so if you could understand, the composting was an area that we thought that would make sense to explore, reaching out to various vendors in this, in the area. There are companies that do provide such services. They do provide services ranging from curbside pickup all the way to drop-off locations. That could be like a hub throughout the town. We do have a pilot at the transportation, and I think that's an area where we can really reduce the overall tonnage in the town enforcement, especially if you start to think about a town-wide solution that could involve curbside pickup. That, that would definitely be a way to really reduce the tipping fees that vibe. The tipping fees right now are still steady at forty-seven dollars a ton, but we might be jumping up to fifty-four dollars a ton. I think, and that's contracted on the agenda in two fiscal years from now. So we definitely want to be ready and have a strategy in place. The, the second item, what the general fund versus the enterprise fund. So, so we discussed this at length. I think the idea is that if we did do a town-wide solution that involved curbside pickup that everyone could participate in, the general fund would be the fairest funding mechanism. The enterprise fund seems to make the most sense if we continue with the current paradigm, which was transportation only. And I think that was more just someone didn't want to have to pay twice for garbage disposal, or if there were individuals in town already paying for curbside, they didn't want to fund the, the transportation model as well. And that, that kind of sets up the hybrid solution, and the hybrid solution what we mean by that is that the transportation remains open, and I, I will be the first one to say the transportation is a very valuable resource for the town enforcement in terms of diversion, and we can almost think of the transportation as a diversion hub for a lot of these things that we don't want to see on the side of the road or in the woods in Portsmouth. So the hybrid solution means that we explore, and there are companies that are, and I know there have been mergers and acquisitions in the private industry since the last time we looked at this in twenty seventeen, that the hybrid solution may be more economically feasible to explore, and if the numbers work, it definitely should warrant serious consideration. And what that would mean is that we have townwide curbside pickup for trash, recyclables, and yard waste, where at the start of the year, yard waste pickup would be there, then a transportation for everything else, that, that the general on and end items. We didn't talk about that middle town contract sunset mid-two thousand and twenty-two. We decided it would probably best to kind of barge to our own path. It may be an option for synergy, but we felt like it was not appropriate to take any formal recommendations on that item, but there is an opportunity to collaborate with other municipalities on a, a contract. And, and I, I don't want to speak for the vendors, but they may deem, they may deem that kind of arrangement more complex. We may have some synergy with town staff, so we have to really decide if it would be worth their complexity. And that's just something I want you, the Town Council, to be aware of, but I, we just don't know how to advise you on that. That number five was pay-as-you-drown. The, the Solid Waste and Recycling Committee strongly supports pay-as-you-drown. We know the numbers work. Maybe put pay-as-you-drown in, and back in twenty seventeen, the, the numbers skyrocketed for recycling from twenty percent to thirty-five percent overnight. It was overnight. So we know it works, but what we don't like is the fact that, you know, the fifteen.
Uh-oh, Ted, we lost you.
You, you lost me?
Yeah, maybe just the last couple of words.
Okay, yeah, just, I'll, I'll repeat myself. I, I was saying pay-as-you-drown for the waste steel contract. We're not happy. The contract does take fifteen percent off the top, though it is not free for that service. But that is really the only mechanism that we are aware of that could prevent, for everybody to buy into that system, especially if you had curbside bins or at the transfer station. It's easy to know that someone bought the bag, but there is waste being generated with that second bag, and we are paying for that. And I don't know if there's a way to put a tag or a sticker or a ribbon. So the best way to implement it, and another solution that was bandied about, was you could offer bins of different sizes to different people, and if you wanted to get the large bin, you'd pay more than someone that just had the small bin, and that would be a way to avoid that fifteen percent over-the-top money that goes to waste steel or to the pay-as-you-drown provider. And then for item number six, I, I, we were talking, we have done informal straw polls throughout the town of Portsmouth. We have found that a lot of facilities throughout the town of Portsmouth do not really coordinate, or it, it seemed like everybody just goes on their own, or goes it alone when it comes to the trash disposal. So we would hope that any facility taking support from the Town Council or a town facility, such as the Glamena House, the Portsmouth Free Public Library, could all like be part of this comprehensive program if it makes sense to have economy to scale. And that kind of brings me down to that we think that businesses, small businesses, probably could participate if you had a curbside solution with pay-as-you-drown. I think private businesses were discouraged for the transportation. We were worried that the crush, there'd be too much traffic at the transportation. But if you did do something where it's curbside or pay-as-you-drown, if it's a small to medium business that didn't generate much trash and didn't really need a dumpster, that could be a pro-business friendly stance that we could take here in the town of Portsmouth. So I think it would make sense to explore that as well, to not think it's just residence-only, that it could be provided in a very limited caliber to small businesses. And that, that's really the, the six points. And I know I spoke for a very long time, and hopefully my audio was okay the whole time, so please, if you, if you didn't understand anything I said, feel free to ask me a question.
No, I, I, thank you. This is, this is very good information that, that the committee has put together, and I also think it's, it's handy for us as councilors to have this as we move forward with some of the decisions we're going to be faced with. And I think clearly we'll be continuing to work with the Solid Waste Recycling Committee to, you know, you know, review some of these recommendations, and also, you know, there might be some other things that come up. I mean, that's, that's how I see this, put it up to other councilors. Sure. Dr. Ryan?
Yeah, Ted, I, I, you know, think of the, during the discussion, it makes sense, and it makes sense the way you're presenting it now. The hybrid solution sounds like it economically makes the most sense, just to have pickup, town-wide pickup for recyclables, for yard waste and trash, and then use the, the transfer station for diversions. But if we were to do that, I presume the curbside would be paid out of the general fund. How would the diversions at the transfer station be paid for in your, you know, the way you look at it?
So the diversion at the transfer station, I think you would look at it, it would have to come out of the overall program and the general fund, because, and I think we have to look at it this way, is that residents around town, if they are, if it's hard for them to get rid of something, illegal dumping, that would become an option, and what is the cost of that illegal dumping? And, and we want to provide a service to our residents, and, and I know that, you know, we're thinking about a return on investment model, and that's not what we're looking at here. We do want to make it self-deficient, and the program as self-deficient as possible, but there is a cost that doesn't show up on any budget line when someone decides to take motor oil and just dump it down a storm drain.
So people would be, individual citizens would be taking their old, you know, metal items, like, you know, yard furniture or old tires and stuff like that, and bringing them to the transfer station themselves as they do now?
That is the vision for the hybrid solution, and I think we're pretty enthusiastic about that. I think we realize the transportation still had a very important role, and, and depending on how the numbers look, it could be possible to offer the transfer station services to Middletown residents. We just don't, I think what we really should do is go in with an open mind. You could write this as an RFI even, and just say that we're looking to stop the transportation for so many hours a week, and, and we can really be flexible about that. But I think it's really important to have a diversion hub for the ton that we like to use, available to the citizens of Portsmouth, especially for scrap metal, appliances, matches. The matches either free if they're claimed, so it's not, it's, we're just looking to provide those options, and we don't want to take away that option for the, the citizen, because people, for the, when the survey went out back in two thousand and seventeen, a lot of folks stated they really liked the transportation for the ability to get rid of a large variety of items. And we're on board. Our diversion rate is fantastic in the state of Rhode Island. We're, we're near the top. We're over fifty-three percent diversion, and I don't want to lose that ranking.
Yeah, I think it makes sense to not look at cooperating with other towns until we have a program like that up and running and see how well it works, then maybe we can start discussing with Middletown as to, you know, sharing resources. Until we actually see how it works, I think it would be difficult to, to discuss this with, with Middletown.
Mr. Jufusa? I have a question, Ted, and, and Mr. Rayner, what should the timing be with a big cushion before we actually have to, you know, pick a company to do things, or before we make our decision? When should we have the RFI go out to get this, start gathering this information? Should it be now? Is that too early?
I think you're muted.
Me?
No, Rich.
Town is muted.
Ted, the town is muted.
We are, I have been unmuted. Well, I think, actually, this is, this is good. We, we need to start thinking about this now. We're probably about eighteen months out from the end of the extensions on the current contract. So now is the time to start thinking about it.
And is that a process that we could do, is send out an RFI prior to an RFP, or is that, how does that? How should it work?
We'll have to explore it. We ran into this last time, and I think that if we model this, you're not going to be satisfied with results. We have to decide on one method, because that's what the vendors are going to bid on. If we offer, if, if we put out an RFP, and we let vendors bid on multiple different ways to approach our solid waste problem, i.e. a hybrid solution or a pure curbside or a roomed transfer station, that the vendors aren't interested in bidding on that, because they all want to, they want to level playing field, and we have to tell them what we want. So I think before we do, in our, what we do in our file, what we now want to do is in our Q or an RFP, or we have decided what direction we want to go.
Well, it feels like what we need are some numbers about the costs of all these different options, and so how do we, how do we start to collect that information, Ted? One?
If I may jump in, I think we, we got some pretty good numbers from the RFP process, but I, I would defer to town staff on the best way to shake trees and collect numbers from various vendors.
Because.
There's examples throughout the state that we can offer them. So we, we have our experience with the test RFP. We know who the vendors are. We have a great example right next door in Middletown, Bristol. So that there are, there are examples that we will look at and start researching. But it would be helpful, once we put this together, if the council would make a decision as to what direction you want to go in, and obviously you'll need to, you'll need to be able to compare apples to apples, and we will start getting that right for you.
I would, I just, I don't know if you need a motion, but it feels like there have been recommendations made by the Solid Waste Committee that make a lot of sense, that we should have some idea of what keeping the status quo would cost versus going all the way to abandoning the status quo, and then also the, the numbers for the hybrid option. And I, I guess I don't understand how we get those numbers, but that's probably, we need something. And then when we go out to the RFP, it would already be that we had selected one of the options, and that's what we're asking for bids for, right? It's kind of a weird situation, but am I understanding that right?
Can I ask you a question? I, shall we pick the right options for our town, and then we'll get a competitive bid on that, and then pick based on the most competitive pricing for what we want for our town? Um, several other towns in Rhode Island that have the hybrid model that's currently being proposed. So it's hard to try to compare dollar values of, you know, of different options. If, say, you have a family of six and you need a mini, you compare that against, you know, a Mini Cooper, and it's just, you're not comparing the same thing. I think we need to come up with a solution that meets all the needs of our community, and then put a competitive bid process for that solution.
I think we have a little bit of work to do in order to, and, and these are all good comments, and this is, this is a very good discussion, and again, this, this information that, that the Solid Waste Committee has put forth tonight is, is, is very helpful to help us with those decisions. I mean, obviously, the next step is a little convoluted. I don't know, you know, I don't know if we need to solicit like a, a workshop or something to get, you know, to get. uh solicit like a a workshop or something to get, you know, to get some input from residents. But as councillors, we need to, we need to understand what the numbers are for these different scenarios and make sure that we have that information. I I fully agree that if we make a decision and then issue an RFP, we will get our best bang for our buck. You know, is to have a, is to have a concise program that we're looking to do, what whatever it's going to be. If it, you know, curbside or a hybrid approach. But we have to weigh the pros and cons. Um there's been a lot of good progress here, we've had a lot of good progress at the transfer station. But if you remember, you know, if we fund the transfer station out of the general fund, then then some folks can go up there and dump again that that haven't been dumping up there. And and we have to control the illegal dumping that occurs, you know, at the transfer station. So there's pros and cons, um as long as we factor everything into our decision, I I think we're going to do what's right for the town. So I I don't know exactly what the next step is. Um I think we should have a motion, obviously, to, you know, to receive and place these on file and then have uh at least some follow-up discussions between the Solid Waste Committee and, you know, and the town council. Just just to help and when, along with the town administrator, to to get us to the next steps. You know, and then that may be after the budget cycle here, um you know. But it it has to be on our, on our horizon, um we can't drag this out.
I have a question, just to clarify on what Linda said. Um Rich, when do you need a decision from the council as to what solution we should go out to RFP? And what's the, like, the drop dead date for going out to RFP? How long did it take the last time to get a new contract?
Um I think that to answer your questions in order, I think um we will work on our side before we come to the council. So I think the way we would do this is we would work with the Solid Waste Recycling Committee, flesh out these options and then get some pricing information, and then come back to you again and try to compare what we think the different options should be, that you should, or could be that you should consider. Then based on the results of that meeting, then we could issue uh an RFP. The last time we did this, all in all, it took the better part of a year. So we would want, within the next six months, we would want to start, you know, we want to get something on the street. Uh and the reason why it takes that long is you, it it's not just a matter of doing the issuing the RFP. Uh depending on how you want to go, we have to guarantee so many people are going to be in the program. We have to order, we uh and decide how we're going to finance the bins, that so on and so forth. Uh so it does take a while. So that would be my recommendation. We will get together with the Solid Waste Recycling Committee, we will refine these options for you with surprising information, come back to you soon. Get some direction from the council and then issue an RFP uh within the next six months.
Good, thank you.
So do we want a motion to receive and place in file? Thank you, all those in favor?
Oh, before I say aye, that that, this motion would be to do what would allow the staff to do what Mr. Rayner just said they should do, correct?
No, just to receive this place on file, the staff already knows what they have to do.
Right, right.
Right, it would allow.
They don't need our direction to start the process.
So it's sort of like, it's sort of like holding it for further study at the State House, except in, they're actually going to study it.
Well, if it's not as dysfunctional a motion as that, um I would say aye, I will say aye.
Town hall's muted.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Berman?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Doc Ryan?
Aye.
And Mr. Guyard?
Aye, motion passes ten to zero. Thank you, Ted. Okay, on to old business number two. Mr. Rayner, our fiscal year twenty twenty-two CIP review.
Can everybody see that on the screen?
Yes.
Okay, uh so, thank you, Mr. President, and good evening again to everybody. Uh tonight, I'll walk you through uh our proposed capital improvement plan for fiscal year twenty-two. We go to the next slide, please. Our capital improvement planning process begins in August of each year, and the capital needs are then reviewed and assessed across all departments, and revisions and updates are made as needed to the long-range CIP request plan. From there, that plan informs and helps us develop uh the fiscal year capital improvement plan, uh which is then incorporated into the proposed budget. Next slide, please. So the proposed plan for this year includes funding uh for the listed capital requested projects. Of note, uh we will, uh we propose to address needed town hall upgrades, refurbishments in Glen Park, playground repairs and upgrades, equipment and vehicle replacement, Glen Stables roof repairs, repairs to the bridge uh at Glen Manor, uh fire equipment, uh new fire equipment, uh yeah, a a grant match for the replacement uh of a fire engine on Prudence Island. All in all, these proposed expenditures total one million four hundred twenty-six thousand eight hundred and twenty-three dollars. Next slide, please. So here we start to break out of costs associated with the proposed uh FY twenty-two CIP. In town hall, we're looking to uh continue the furniture and office upgrade program to ten thousand. Now flooring, uh about forty-five thousand, and flat roof repair at eighteen thousand, or town hall totals seventy-three thousand. Planning department, we propose to continue the memorial beach program at twenty-five hundred. In recreation, uh we plan to refurbish and renovate the uh bathhouse at two hundred to two thousand. Glen Park building repairs at forty-two thousand. Picnic tables at thirteen hundred, uh sinks uh at thirty-five hundred, and playground uh repairs and equipment at a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, for a total of three hundred ninety-four thousand nine hundred and ten dollars. Next slide, please. In public works, we're looking at new equipment, and armor more, a hundred thirty-seven point five thousand dollars, uh and a three-quarter ton truck at forty-four thousand. Now, we're looking at doing some uh siding and exterior paint at the Prudence Island uh DPW at uh a little over forty-four thousand dollars. Uh we're looking to do some work at the Glen Stables, uh roofwork at a little over fifty-nine thousand dollars, and to address two more cupolas at forty-five thousand dollars. Uh the Glen Manor pedestrian bridge to the dock needs to be repaired, that's thirty-five thousand. We have a placeholder in here, thirty-five thousand dollars for a complete street study. As we anticipate, we'll pass a complete street ordinance. And then we uh look to continue the repairs to the stone wall uh at uh Linden Lane. So for a total, uh total DPW total of four hundred twenty thousand two hundred and two dollars. The fire department, now we're looking to replace the Boston Widow Rescue Goat at twenty-five thousand. We need new fire hose, eighty-five hundred dollars. Need a second lead monitor, thirty-three thousand. Um we're looking to uh provide for a grant match for uh a grant to replace radios at a little over seventy-four hundred dollars. Um we're looking to provide a grant match to replace a a fire engine on Prudence Island, eighteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. And then uh repairs to the fire station roof at two hundred and sixty thousand, for a total fire department CIP of three hundred fifty-two thousand six hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Next slide, please. The police department, now we're looking at new vehicles and some mechanics tools. We have a mechanic today, we have a, and the the mechanics tools. So total of the police department CIP, hundred eighty-three thousand five hundred and thirty-two dollars. So the grand total there, as I said, one million four hundred twenty-six thousand eight hundred and twenty-three dollars. To note, there are no, there's, there's no uh borrowing associated with this proposed CIP. Go to the next slide. Here you can see the relative size of each proposed expenditure compared to the whole proposal. The biggest projects and expenditures uh if approved will be the fire station roof, uh the new police vehicles, the seventy-point beach bathhouse, uh the playgrounds, and uh the DPW armor more. Go to the next slide, please. Here's how I propose we fund uh next year's CIP. As reported in the comprehensive annual financial report, uh we had a six hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollar surplus. This would normally be swept into the fund balance, commonly known as the rainy day fund. We also have uh two hundred six hundred, two hundred sixty-three thousand dollars in our COVID emergency fund, and about two hundred thousand dollars in the FY twenty-one contingency fund. Additionally, we have received eight hundred and fourteen thousand dollars in municipal COVID response funds from the state. That total is one million nine hundred seventy-seven thousand two hundred and two dollars. Half of the FY twenty surplus is three hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, and that has been applied to the FY twelve thirteen warranty. From the remainder, I repo, I I propose that the one point four two million required for new CIPs be applied uh from from that total, uh sub-total. And then, uh we put, we keep fifty-one thousand two hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars in the contingency fund, and then we apply one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the fund balance. Next slide, please. Okay, so that's the CIP that has proposed. Now, as most of you are aware, the towns will receive additional funds over the next two years from the American Rescue Plan. The details from the Treasury Department are expected early next month. With our federal delegation, both senators and our congressmen have communicated the following. We should expect eight hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars within the next forty-five days. Another eight hundred and fifty-four thousand will be forthcoming later in the next fiscal year. The next federal fiscal year, it would, it would still be in our fiscal year. Federal fiscal year ends uh September thirtieth, ours does, ours goes all the way. Um, all the way until June thirtieth, I'm sorry. So uh in the next year, we will get about one point seven million dollars uh from the American Rescue Plan. Additionally, money designated for counties in the American Rescue Plan will be distributed to municipalities in Rhode Island, because we do not have county governments. And from that, we expect approximately three point three million dollars out of that disbursement. Now, on this slide, you'll see the allowable uses uh for the American Rescue Plan are listed, and they are fairly broad. The most important thing to remember is to not build in a structural deficit with this money. In other words, it should only be used to fund one-time expenditures that do not allocate the town beyond the amount of funds available. And additionally, uh these funds will have to be spent uh within two to three years next. And as I say, we're going to get more guidance from the Treasury Department next month. So if we go to the next slide, please. So all in all, we expect about five million dollars from the American Rescue Plan program. This money will be placed in a special account and treated as a grant. We expect stringent reporting requirements from the federal government, and we anticipate a fair degree of oversight. What I've listed here on this slide are proposed uses, which have been discussed with the federal delegation for anticipated compliance with the rules that we are expecting from the Treasury Department. Overtime, overtime from this fiscal year is an eligible expense, and we apportion a percentage of the overtime cost for the pandemic to this program. Additionally, there are CIP projects which we believe fall under the allowable ARP uses. Specifically, a complete overhaul of the town chamber audiovisual system, a public safety computer, public safety computer equipment, dispatching software and equipment, a new ambulance, a fiber link to the new, to the DPW building, and some emergency management upgrades. And we will have, as I said, two to three years to expend the remaining funds, which should be about in excess of three point six million dollars. And I've listed some possible priorities, but there are plenty, there there will be plenty of time to discuss this as the funds become available. Next slide, please. Now, in this CIP, uh we also, we include this in CIP, but it's funded separately uh in the budget. Uh it will be the road paving program for the next fiscal year. Our road surface rating was evaluated last year. Our current roads, road, road surface rating is seventy-one point seven seven, cost seventy-two. When converting this slide, I just want to note that when we converted this slide to a PDF file, brackets in the government condition box slipped down, so it looks like we're fair. Uh that yellow box, but we're actually up in the second box from the top. Uh we are in the satisfactory box. Uh so all our roads, uh overall, uh fall into satisfactory category. Now, this forecast expresses the effect, the anticipated budgeting scenarios that we've laid out over the next five years will have on our road surface uh rating moving forward. So we're proposing eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the fiscal year twenty-two road paving program. So that, Mr. President and council, that lays out uh our proposed capital improvement plan for uh this year twenty-two.
Thank you, Mr. Rayner. Um this is uh, this is good news on, on the funding side. Um a- and it'll be, it'll be helpful when we get the additional information uh from the Department of Treasury. It's uh, as you mentioned, it's important for us to identify um how we're able to apply that money, especially the county. Um if we look at infrastructure and what's infrastructure, is it our buildings, our, our grounds? Um, you know, the, these are things that uh that could open up um some other improvements that we know we need to do uh as a town. But this is uh, this, this is a nice uh, nice outcome here. If this money comes our way and we are able to um use it according to the, to the rules that they establish. During those meetings, they also indicate um that there is the potential for an additional infrastructure bond, uh in infrastructure program that that the president is is um posing. And so we also want to be careful about what, what could potentially be in the infrastructure bill, because that could send additional monies to the states, but it could also send monies to the local municipalities, which in Rhode Island has not happened. Um it happens in Massachusetts, does not happen in Rhode Island. So we, we want to keep an eye on that as well. Could get some additional money, you know, to help us with our, with our, our road projects or any of our other infrastructure projects. We, they did caution us and say, you know, it's a long way out, but keep that in mind as well um as we look over the next two to three years. So these are, these are good, uh, you know, these are some good scenarios. We'll have to see how, how it plays out. Uh I don't know if councillors have questions, comments?
I just have one, one comment to make, that you're right. If you, some of the extra money might be a long way out, but oftentimes when these federal programs come out, if they're a grant program especially, often they require shovel-ready projects. Um so it would behoove us to have a pipeline of projects that are at least conceptually designed and have a price tag associated with them, so we can act quickly and when requesting funding and have projects that are, you know, attractive for federal grant programs.
Excellent points, and uh and I think that's something we have to, you know, keep our eye on for what those requirements are. Um because again, we have to see if, you know, could we use some of this money towards future you know, capital projects, whether it's the engineering side of things, to to have projects shovel-ready. You know, that might be, you know, a, 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 I guess, a connection from this funding source to the next funding source. But we have to, we have to be careful um and and understand what those requirements are. Uh right now, I think um this is good information, and I, as they stressed, we'll have to watch for the uh, the follow-up information from the Department of Treasury uh early next month. we'll have to watch for the, the follow-up information from the Department of Treasury early next month. And, and there, our delegates mentioned that they're available to help us as well if we have questions, if we need clarification, you know, they're there to help us. And if there's opportunities to clarify things, that they said to reach out. So I, I think this is encouraging, and I, you know, if, if it, if it continues along this line, we might be able to finally get, you know, some of these capital projects behind us. So, thank you, Rich. Any further questions, comments? Okay. We'll move on to new business. First one is to, is to request to, to refer to the planning board for an advisory opinion advertised for a public hearing, Dexter Street Development Zone change request. Do we have anybody on hand? I think our public meeting, public hearing would be May 24th.
I thought this is a request to forward to the planning board.
I'm sorry, report, yeah, you're correct. To the planning board, not for us. You're correct. Sorry about that.
Motion to forward to the planning board for an advisory.
Seconded.
Mr. Hamilton? Actually, to refer to the planning board for an advisory opinion and also a request for a public hearing, so that by the time the planning board gets it, there's, there's plenty of time for the public hearings, which they were looking to add to the other hearings we were doing on the 24th of May.
There's no guarantee.
It's all part of the, it's all part of the zoning, when there's a proposed zoning amendment, it's all part of the same process. One part of it is it's supposed to be hearing before the town council within 65 days.
So do you think they'll be before the planning board? And then before, potentially before us in May, or should we push it to the June meeting?
Well, I mean, it's, it's, this is a straight request to rezone certain parcel of land. Sometimes if it's a more elaborate or extensive proposal like, like last year, and then the, which actually started the year before, the proposed solar amendments, that we, that wouldn't, in that case, we didn't immediately schedule a hearing because it took a lot of time and effort to develop what the actual proposal was. But here, it's a straight request to, just to change the zoning on a particular parcel. So, I mean, if you, I don't, there's no, you could wait until the, you don't have to run the ads immediately, you know, we don't want to run ads and then have them ask us to put it off. So I think you probably wait till the next meeting day.
When, when could we reasonably expect the planning board would be able to consider?
Yeah, they'll probably, they'll consider it their main, at their main meeting. But that wouldn't give enough time to run the ads and have the hearing within 65 days of the proposal. Which is at the, which again, is at the expense of the, the party proposing the amendment.
So the problem we've run into here is if this planning board doesn't get to it, and they had advertised for a public hearing on 24th or June 12th or whatever that is, and they don't get to it, we don't have an advisory opinion, we're going to have the public hearing anyways.
Well, they, part of the process is the planning board's supposed to study and recommend. And it's supposed, the, the hearing before the council on the proposed amendment is to be held within 65 days.
So if they, if they consider it in May, we can sign it to a June meeting, and that should work out.
14th?
Wouldn't be within 65 days of the proposal, but that.
June 14th is in 65 days. That's less than 65 days to June 14th?
Yep.
If my math is right.
Just have it on for, either do it under future meetings or.
I'll just amend my motion to forward to the planning board for recommendations and hold a public hearing June 14th.
I'll second that.
Excellent. All those in favor?
Ms. Jakuza?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Bumire?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Rader?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. And the next one is also a request. The same situation, advisory opinion and advertise for a public hearing.
Hamilton, you did that so eloquently. Forward to the planning board for an advisory opinion and schedule a public hearing for June 14th.
Seconded again.
Oh, yeah.
Excuse me, may I, may I jump in for just a moment?
Please do.
Before you make your motion, the precise language would be "study and recommendation, not advisory opinion."
Well, it's.
I'm just reading what the agenda item is, but okay.
Yeah.
Study and recommendations. I will, I will change my motion.
I guess I'll second it a second time.
Mr. President, is that different than the last motion language was?
Well, it's, it's slightly different, but it's an advisory opinion to the planning board. Have we covered, Mr. Gavin? I mean, the planning board's going to make a recommendation on the proposal, correct?
Proposed, the proposed amendment to the zoning with these parcels, the language is equivalent. So I, I don't think it's, you know, the statute does say "study and recommend", but I think that's equivalent to sending it them for advisory recommendations. I mean, it's just semantics.
Correct. So on the advice of council, we have a motion and a second. That was good, huh? All, all those in favor?
Ms. Jakuza?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Bumire?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
And Mr. Rader?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Let's move on to new business number three. It's municipal fertilizer ordinance. I have a Jay Thorpe, Save the Bay. Going to be presenting. Jed, Jed Thorpe?
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yep.
We got you now.
Hey, great. Do I need to mute you guys?
Town hall needs muted, that's all.
Hello, can you, can you still hear me?
Yeah, and you're not echoing, it sounds fine.
Okay, great. Um, well, thank you for giving me a few minutes on your agenda tonight to talk about fertilizers in Rhode Island and options for cities and towns that might want to take actions to help reduce impacts from fertilizers. Save the Bay's concern about fertilizers exists within the broader issue of stormwater pollution, also known as non-point source pollution, which is one of the biggest threats to water quality in the state and perhaps the most challenging one to address. Next slide, please. I always like to point out to folks that stormwater itself is not a source of pollution, it's just a delivery mechanism for pollutants that come from other sources in our environment. For nutrient pollution, and by nutrients, we're talking about things like nitrogen and phosphorus, those sources of pollution include wastewater discharges, so wastewater from wastewater treatment plants, also septic, septic systems, fertilizers, agricultural land use, and a little bit from atmospheric deposition. Next slide. There's been a lot of research over the years because of the significance of the nitrogen problem in Narragansett Bay into the various sources of nitrogen and phosphorus. That modeling shows that population and sewers obviously are the biggest drivers of the increases that have occurred in the past hundred years. But that same modeling also shows that, beginning in about the 1970s, fertilizer surpassed animal waste as a relative contributor of nutrient pollution in the Narragansett Bay watershed. And scientists now estimate that the rates of nitrogen being applied to lawns and gardens may now be up to double that of nutrients being applied to field crops. Next slide. This chart right here shows the relative contributions of various sources of nitrogen into Narragansett Bay since 1850. You can see obviously sewage and both treated sewage and untreated sewage are still the largest share. But if you zero in on the past 40 or 50 years, next slide, you can see that fertilizer is a growing contributor, and that's what has folks like myself, folks at the Department of Environmental Management concerned. And we know that in order to get our nutrient levels back down to a healthy level, we have to address nutrient pollution from all sources, including fertilizers. Next slide. Fertilizer runoff contributes to something called eutrophication, which I'm not going to go into a lot of detail about tonight. Basically, that nitrogen and phosphorus, which is great when it's on your lawn because it helps things grow, it becomes very bad when it gets into our water bodies for the very same reason. It leads to excessive plant growth, excessive algae growth, which in turn sucks up oxygen from the water and can lead to things like fish kills. Next slide. This map here on the right shows, this is from DEM. It shows occurrences of harmful algal blooms in recent years, which is something else that nutrient pollution contributes to. Blooms, algal blooms have been noted by DEM in recent years in Sisson Pond, Lawton Reservoir, St. Mary's Pond, and Melville Pond as well. And those can sometimes lead to no contact advisories being issued by the State Health Department because that algae can be toxic to humans and also to pets. Next slide. Statewide, there are 71 water bodies that are currently on DEM's list for being impaired for nutrient pollution. All of the Quinick Islands drinking water reservoirs are impaired for nutrients. And again, in Portsmouth, Melville Pond, Sisson Pond, St. Mary's Pond, and Lawton Reservoir are all on that DEM impaired water bodies list. When you are on, when a water body is on the impaired waters list, eventually what's called a TMDL management plan will have to be developed. And Sisson, St. Mary's, and Lawton were all originally on the schedule for last year. DEM is a little bit behind schedule, but they plan to address the TMDLs for those three water bodies this year, starting this year, as part of their island-wide nutrient TMDL plan. Next slide. This is simply a map that shows all the impaired water bodies for nutrient pollution in the state of Rhode Island. You can go to the next slide. You may wonder, well, if it's a problem, what's being done about it? Well, statewide, Rhode Island is unique among the states in the region in that there are almost no rules or regulations at the state level regarding fertilizer. There is a commercial fertilizer law that's been on the books since the late 70s, but that only deals with the labeling requirements for manufacturers that sell commercial fertilizer in the state. There are no rules regarding licensing for fertilizer applicators. You might be surprised to know that if you have a truck and a bucket and a shovel, you can apply fertilizers with no training requirements, and you can call yourself a landscaper and a fertilizer applicator. There are also, you know, in, in other states, they have things like seasonal blackout windows, setback provisions from water bodies. Rhode Island doesn't have any of that. But Rhode Island also doesn't have any rules that prevent cities and towns from regulating fertilizers at the local level. DEM does have several voluntary programs under their sustainable turf management program. They have a voluntary green golf course program, which has been pretty well received and fairly successful. And also some sustainable turf management programs that target municipalities, institutions, and also landscape companies. And the way this works is you could go onto DEM's website, fill out a voluntary checklist, and if you score high enough on the checklist, you could be put on their list as a green landscape company, a green municipality, for example, if you chose to do so. Next slide. Save the Bay has looked pretty closely at ordinances that exist in other parts of the country and other parts of the region. Several municipalities on the Cape, Barnstable, Martha's Vineyard, Hyannis, have fertilizer ordinances on the books. Many counties in Florida where the algal blooms are especially problematic have ordinances, and some of the things that are often in those ordinances include some things that I've listed here. So restricting being able to put phosphorus fertilizer on your lawn unless you first have a soil test that shows that there's a phosphorus deficiency, requiring a certain percentage of slow-release nitrogen, having certain setbacks or buffers around water bodies, and restrictions on applying before a heavy rain event, for example. In Rhode Island, next slide. Last year, Barrington, the town of Barrington, became the first municipality in Rhode Island to pass a local fertilizer ordinance. Their ordinance is very simple, and they sort of focused in on the four best management practices that would have the biggest impact. So the four requirements in the Barrington ordinance are, number one, that you can't apply fertilizer during the dormant season, so you can't apply between October 31st and April 1st. You shouldn't apply on any impervious surface, and if you do, it has to be cleaned up right away. Don't apply before a forecasted heavy rain event. And don't apply fertilizer within 100 feet of a public water body. Barrington's ordinance, they decided to do a binding enforceable ordinance, although I spoke with the town councillor there that spearheaded that effort. Their intent in Barrington is not to go after individual homeowners and to start issuing fines when people don't apply fertilizer properly. Their, their primary target was the fertilizer companies, the, the landscape companies, because the thinking is that they have a lot more to lose by not following the local ordinance. And they also chose to do something that was binding and enforceable because they felt that that was necessary to convey the seriousness of the issue to the residents there in Barrington. You can go to the next slide. Charlestown is the other municipality in Rhode Island that has taken some action. They went a slightly different direction. Back in 2016, they found high levels of nitrates in their groundwater, which was also their drinking water source. Most of that, they concluded, was probably coming from septic systems, but 20% or so, they decided was probably from fertilizers. They considered an enforceable ordinance, but they opted to create what they called their recommended landscaper program. Now, this is a voluntary program where landscape companies can fill out a checklist, agree to follow a certain set of best management practices, and once they've done that, they get sort of a gold star, they can use that in their advertising materials, and the town also helps to promote those companies that have gone through that, through that process. A suggestion that I make when I talk to cities and towns who might be interested in the Charlestown approach is, you know, rather than creating your own, you know, municipal-approved landscaper program, what you could do is just piggyback off of DEM's existing Sustainable Turf Management Program and just drive people to that list, rather than ending up in a situation where we have, you know, all 39 cities and towns are kind of creating their own thing. It's certainly better for the landscape companies if people just sort of promote and highlight DEM's program. I can go to the next slide. But, you know, regardless of which option a municipality might choose, whether it's the Barrington approach or the Charlestown approach, public education is key because you're ultimately trying to change human behavior, either getting them to change how they choose a landscape company or getting them to change their own actions and how they apply fertilizer on their own yard. You have to get the public to understand the water quality problems that are connected with fertilizer use. They have to be aware of the best management practices and how those connect to the problem. Folks have to be aware of local options. So if you want to find a, a green lawn care company, how do you find who those are? If you want to find a local source of compost, how do you find, you know, where to find that? I'm currently working with the Bristol Conservation Commission. They were thinking about doing an ordinance, but they decided that they wanted to do some, some very localized, targeted, public education. So I'm working with them right now on a trifold brochure that's very specific to Bristol. And that has value in and of itself, but it also potentially lays a groundwork for an ordinance at some point down the road there in Bristol. Next slide, and this is almost my last one. Enclosing cities and towns can lead by example through the management of public properties like parks and sports fields and other municipal properties. You can do public education like what the Bristol Conservation Commission is doing right now through targeted, localized education. You can do public education like what the Bristol Conservation Commission is doing right now through targeted localized education materials. You could do the Barrington approach with a mandatory enforceable ordinance. Which can make a lot of sense, or you could do something more like Charlestown. And implement some sort of voluntary program. If Portsmouth does want to pursue any of those options. Save the Bay is ready and able to assist in any way that you might think would be helpful. And with that, I will stop and happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Jed. Excellent, excellent presentation. And, and I would like to just touch base on a few things you mentioned. Like the approach of making public education a priority. Getting the information out there as, as to a, to an ordinance right off the bat. I think an ordinance probably takes a little bit of time. I, you mentioned that DEM is also a little bit behind schedule. I've heard rumblings that DEM is going to be restarting. Their stormwater program. And so the stormwater program that started in two thousand and three. Everybody, most municipalities got their permit. They were good until two thousand and eight and then. They've just been carried over from two thousand and eight until two thousand and twenty one.
Right, right.
So, and you mentioned the TMDLs. I like the, I like the, I like the targeted approach. To a watershed campaign maybe within. Saint Mary's Pond, Melville Pond, Lawton, Brook and Sisson Pond, those are where we've had those known algae problem. You know, that, that type of reinforcement, I think can go a long way. I think an ordinance would probably take some time, but I, I would be in favor of, you know, working with our town planner. Our, our stormwater committee is probably hasn't met since two thousand and eight, if I was going out on a limb. But these are things that I think are going to start to come back to the forefront and. I, there will be, you know, stormwater, water quality will be at the, you know, will be at the forefront along with some of these other resilient initiatives. So I, I think it is, you know, it's an, it's an important step forward. At least to start getting the education out there about the fertilizers. Especially within those, those problematic watersheds.
Yep. And Kevin, you mentioned the TMDL, you know, process and. For, for other water bodies that already have a TMDL in place for nutrient pollution. The first step in almost every one of those plans. Is better public education, more targeted public education. Everything else gets expensive and usually costs money. Whereas public education, trying to change behavior is frankly the cheapest option that usually municipalities have available to them. You know, other things like retrofitting stormwater catch basins, things of that nature. Start to cost money, so it's logical that folks would start with that. So I think that that does make sense.
Thank you. Questions from councilors, Ms. Abbott?
Yeah, I have comments. I, I agree with some of your statements, Mr. President, but. I also think that, you know, education, public education is excellent, it's great. Like Mr. Thorpe said, it's also the, the cheapest option that we have. It also happens to be probably the least effective. Because unless you have something enforceable, then it's, it's hard to actually get concrete results. As a coastal town on an island with, you know, on average. Half acre, if not bigger lawns all over the place. I think. It's, we should feel responsible to set a tone and be and lead by example. And, you know, it might take a while, but I, I would be in favor of starting to draft an ordinance. That we can, can enforce because yes, we have specific. You know, drinking water reservoir watersheds that are problematic, but. You know, we're all in the Narragansett Bay watershed, so it all goes. Somewhere that, that is not good. So I would be very much in favor of starting, you know, kicking this off and, and. Having the town and our planning department work with Save the Bay to draft a fertilizer ordinance similar to what Barrington currently has.
You know, you know, it's probably worth noting that the Barrington ordinance. Does not prohibit fertilizer application. It simply puts best management practices in place. That either homeowners or landscape companies have to, have to follow. So, you know, and Barrington folks can still fertilize their lawns. They just have, you know, a few little bits of guidance that they have to follow from the town there in order to do so.
I, I understand. Thank you, Jed. Any further questions, comment, councilors or?
I could step in if I may. I have had. A great deal of public information on the town planner's website about stormwater. Management and fertilizers and. The stormwater ordinance as it, as it applies to the town for many years. So it's there if anybody wants to. Have a look at it.
Crosby, what is your recommendation?
My recommendation? I suppose we could look at a, at, at. A draft of a fertilizer ordinance. I don't know. Yeah, sure. I'll have a, I can make a stab at it, sure. I, I worry about enforcement, however. I, I keep thinking, you know, I was watching the, 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 the presentation and I was thinking to myself, who's going to go out there and. And enforce this ordinance like a great many of our ordinances. They don't really talk about enforcement very much and. You know, perhaps we need to talk about that more, but yeah, I'll make a stab at it. I don't know. Sure.
Mr. Thorpe, what about the enforcement question? How? How is it enforced in Barrington?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question and I, you know, I don't think that the Barrington ordinance has been in place. Long enough or at least not through a real fertilizer season, if you will. To have a good handle on how that's gone there. As I said, when I, when I talked with the town council member. In Barrington that spearheaded that effort, you know, he told me that their intent was not to. Really go after individual homeowners and, and define them for how they're applying or not applying fertilizer. It was really more about conveying the message to homeowners that. You know, this is a serious issue that the town was serious about. And they thought that by having an enforceable ordinance, it sort of conveyed a higher level of seriousness. I also know that their, you know, primary target with that ordinance was really the landscape companies. And I don't know what they have done to communicate their ordinance requirements to the, to, to those various landscape companies. But I will look into that and get back to you because I think that that is a key question, enforceability, definitely.
I would just say, Mr. President, that I've been looking at this personally because we were. Using a lawn company and this year is the first year we will not be doing that. And in large part, it's because of what was, what I saw. Seeing Melville have algae blooms where you couldn't even let your dog near it. Because it might kill the dog and not have the fish stalking because of this problem and. I think it's really, really affecting the town and we've just got to cut it out and that. And number two, when we were growing up, we had clover in the lawn. As far as I can, and I don't remember my dad ever putting chemicals on the lawn. And apparently because broadleaf weed killer also takes out clover, there was a concerted effort by corporations to start calling clover. A weed. And it actually is beneficial to have, attract bees and. I don't know, you can fill in the science there, but it does good things keeping nitrogen in the soil and. So I think we definitely are over fertilizing and. That education piece is important and so I'd like to propose we go on both tracks that maybe the ordinance isn't fully. I'd like them to start creating an ordinance for us, but I'd also like to pursue the education piece as well. And I'm just wondering if we can run on all the tracks that were recommended.
I have a suggestion. Save the Bay actually has an amazing little booklet that they made that used to be distributed when I was in the Conservation Commission. We had a box of them that we could hand out at events. That has a whole section on what homeowners can do to reduce impact to water pollution and stormwater pollution. There you go. Your education piece is done. Send one at home with every kid from school and hand it out to, to adults that come to the transfer to station. I don't know. I don't, I don't think we need. A localized educational, public education effort in Portsmouth. I think we know the issue, we know the solutions, we just need to start acting on those.
So what would your specific suggestions for what actions we take going forward be?
Let's draft an ordinance. And ask Save the Bay to. I don't know, do we need a motion? I'll make a motion that, you know, we work with. Save the Bay to draft fertilizer ordinance for the town of Portsmouth.
I'd second that motion.
Okay, any further discussion?
No, I think if we could, with DEM to grab their books, we could put, I mean. Side of the larger places in Middletown and obviously outside of Portsmouth, there's only. Three places people can get fertilizer in town. And work our, uh, Agway. You know, Mellos.
Yeah, Amazon too, though.
What's that?
I mean, Amazon also, people buy fertilizers online.
Yeah, yeah, sure. But, I mean, if we could work DEM to grab pamphlets that you mentioned and ask that each of the. Each of those places, put them out for people. That might help with the education part.
Yeah.
It's probably in our stormwater plan. There's a public education component. There's a litany of information on the DEM website as well as the Rhode Island, University of Rhode Island's website. They try to standardize.
As well as, excuse me for interrupting, but as well as my inner website.
Yep, I mean, on the town, so the town has links to our stormwater program. And I, I think, I think a lot of it. You know, I, I, I think the program at DEM, as we've heard, has been lax. They have not amended the plan since two thousand and eight. The stormwater plan for the town of Bristol. I, I, I was, I had a hand in crafting the stormwater plan for the town of Bristol. I crafted the stormwater plan for the city of Warwick, South Kingstown. I'm, I'm very familiar with, with the stormwater requirements. I do understand that the biggest challenge is public education and getting folks to buy in. The analogy of, of the enforcement, we were just talking about enforcement and he said that they're not really going after homeowners. I mean, that's like putting up the stop sign, you know, the sign for the traffic cameras, people are just going to slow down and then speed up. It's the same type of process. I mean, people are going to put fertilizer down. When they're going to put fertilizer down. It, you know, it's a public education. The problem is in the targeted watersheds. That, that's where we have phosphorus problems. Melville, there's very little circulation in those ponds. And I believe the island watershed program is developing BMPs and STUs along with DOT. To, to address those very specific impairments. So I support public education. I, if you want to draft an ordinance, we can, we can go down that road. But I think it has to be integrated in with our stormwater plan and consistent with the, you know, TM guidance. Because we could be redoing some, a year from now if, if the TMDS are, are approved. That's all. So we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Ms. Ujikusa?
Hi.
Ms. Abbott?
Hi.
Mr. Bynum?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Ms. Aggar?
Hi.
Mr. Crosby, I'd be happy to help out with the ordinance.
And, yeah, we, we had a request from one of the quarters there and I'll send this to Kelly. As to whether or not the Water Board would be willing to send out the, the fire and the water bills. That's something that they could, Newport, to do. Since it's affecting the water supply. You guys are muted in town hall, by the way.
I will wire about it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, on to our next item. Jed, thank you for that presentation. Excellent presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, our next is the proposed rules for Glen Park. Is it Dave's? We have the committee, I'm trying to. Dave, you're muted.
Yep, I think I'm unmuted now. Perfect, all right, everybody. Council members, thank you for having me tonight. As the Chair of the Paxton Rec Committee. I'm presenting to you today an updated, new old version of a, the Glen Park rules and regulations. With some updated fees for rental of the park. Our committee and I have been working on this for quite some time, obviously COVID. Pause on a lot of stuff, but we resumed this about a month and a half ago, two months ago. We did a lot of research with our neighboring towns to see what their rules and regulations were for their park facilities and we feel that. We drafted a document that's on par. Every other town is doing. And I believe that we put together a really clear and concise document to give out to anybody that's looking to. Rent the Glen Park. As you can see in the first page, we list all of the fields that are for rental, the soccer fields and the softball fields and. I believe it's a very clear and concise document. It lists our amenities at the Glen Park. Along with the rules, usage. We added some regulations that were lacking on the previous documents and. Also went into the sports rental, soccer field, softball fields and volleyball courts as well. Where the facility rental fees are. And then lastly, the, the actual fee structure has changed a little bit from what it used to be. Previously, kind of, kind of the, the same, we, we went into, if, if a town resident wants to rent the park versus a nonprofit town. Nonprofit organization as a Portsmouth town resident versus anybody that's outside of the town. And the numbers that we kind of came up with were based on what DPW submitted to them, what it costs. On a daily basis to maintain that park. So I feel like the fees are structured in a way that's fair for town, town members. But, but very competitive and appropriate for anybody outside of the town looking to rent the park as well. So. Submitting for any questions, comments, but approval going forward.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I make, I make a motion that we approve the rules. I, I know that the committee worked super hard and, and they went into a lot of detail, discussed a lot of options and I really thank them for all their efforts. So I would make an emotion that we approve these. They're great. Thank you, David.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much.
I like the second emotion, if I'm unmuted.
I'm sorry, I can't hear anybody.
Nobody's saying anything, so you're good.
Sorry, thank you.
What's Aggar to say? All those in favor?
We've had a motion in a second, Mr. President.
Thank you. I couldn't hear these pesky Zoom meetings.
Mr. Aggar is still muted.
All those in favor?
Ms. Ujikusa?
Hi.
Ms. Abbott? Mr. Bynum?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan? Dr. Ryan?
Yeah, I know, I know the feeling, Dr. Ryan. You're muted.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I'm just, I'm just asking somebody to get Mr. President a couple of aspirin and something to drink. I vote aye.
I vote aye as well. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
We will persevere. Okay. Uh, next item. It's resolution, uh, that the General Assembly allow the local control over tobacco policies, House Bill fifty-six thirty-three and Senate Bill. Uh, Mr. Kelly?
I approve the resolution as submitted.
Uh, I'm second for discussion. I did not go in and read the entire bill, uh, Mr. Kelly. This give the town the ability to, uh, tax tobacco or just to define where it's sold and that selling?
It, it gives the town the autonomy that it north already has. So no, not taxing. It, it maintains whether or not we allow tobacco sale to occur enforcement where it occurs, what kinds can be sold. Uh, contrary to the former governor's executive order, which I'm not sure is still standing, uh, about uh, the different flavors of tobacco products, et cetera.
And, and what do you intend to, uh, you have any thoughts of what to do with this if it does pass?
No. I just want to.
I'm just asking the question. I'm against kids vaping and, and people smoking anyway. So it doesn't affect me. I'd, I'd rather see it all gone, but.
I, I do not have any thoughts of which, what we will do. I want to maintain the local control that.
Yeah, I, that, that the, um, the effect of this bill kind of bothers me a little bit. It, uh, doesn't make that much sense to me that Portsmouth is going to have one set of rules as to what can be sold and where, when Middletown and Bristol have different rules. Um, it's sort of like, you know, are we going to start seeing the equivalent of the New Hampshire State Liquor Store on the border of Massachusetts? We'll have the, you know, Bristol Tobacco Store right on the other side of the Mount Hope Bridge. Um, if you're regulating addictive substances like this, it makes more sense to me that you do it at least statewide, if not nationally. But I don't know.
Uh, Mr. President, I, I should have researched this before the meeting, but I was under the impression that the flavored, um, vaping things were regulated at a higher level than municipalities. Am I, am I wrong? And that was a major concern, right?
Yeah. If that's, does that allow municipalities to override the restrictions the state puts on them?
No, I don't, that's not.
They were regulated temporarily for a three-month period or something like that. Um, I don't think, as Mr. Kelly mentioned, I don't think that's been extended.
I could interject. I, I believe there may have been some court cases where, uh, municipal ordinances regulating tobacco were, were overturned as being, uh, preempted statewide, not something for thirty-nine municipalities to all regulate. I think the bill probably is an attempt to, uh, reverse the decision of those court cases and allow municipalities to regulate as well as the state.
Don't know if, if.
If, if this, if this, if this bill does go through, who would it be in the town of Portsmouth? Who would be responsible for drawing up a policy about how tobacco products are regulated in the town?
You. Someone on Town Council. That's, that's who sets the ordinance in town.
Yeah.
It, it, it would, it would essentially try to, um, to, uh, reverse in essence, some court cases that held that, that municipalities don't have authority under their charter to regulate tobacco, that it's a, it's a matter of statewide concern that should be regulated statewide. And this, this bill would seek to undo that, as I understand it. I don't have all the information, but that's my understanding of what the intent of the bills are.
So if we did want to do something like restrict tobacco sales within us, like we do with alcohol sales within a certain distance of, say, a school, if we want to restrict, uh, the sale of flavored tobaccos or vaping products, this would protect us against lawsuits from people seeking to sell.
I, I couldn't really hear that. It was broken up. I don't know about other councils.
Are those things already restricted on a state level and consistent across the state?
So I didn't, that question to me?
Yeah, I guess. I don't know. I don't know enough of this, but it's, it seems.
I believe there were some court, as, as far as I understand it, there were some court cases where municipalities adopted ordinances regulating tobacco and courts overturned those as not being authorized under the local charter. And these bills are designed to, uh, to circumvent that ruling and give, enabling authority to cities and towns to regulate tobacco.
I, I guess part of Council Abbott's, I guess part, part of Councilor Abbott's question was, um, do those regulations exist at the state level right now? Are there restrictions, flavored tobacco? Are there restrictions on sale?
I believe, I believe, I don't have all that information. And I mean.
I don't, I don't know either.
Those rulings, what the court rulings were that it's a matter for the state to regulate, not municipal.
Well, here's, this would allow us to be more restrictive than the state allows. So if the state allowed flavored tobacco, Portsmouth could not. The tobacco lobby doesn't want municipalities to be able to regulate at all because the state has much broader, more open, uh, position.
And it's much easier to lobby.
And much easier lobby.
Yeah, I mean, I, I.
And, and I was asked to submit this by Representative Courtman, so, um, I mean, I support it, but that's who asked me to submit.
Bill, Bill two fifty-eight, if, if passed, this act would allow cities and towns to create ordinances to regulate the in sale of cigarettes, other tobacco products and nicotine. So we could go stronger than the state law or we could just abide by state law. Just gives you the option.
Yep.
Uh, Mr. President, I, I've been convinced by the notion that, uh, the tobacco lobby, um, is much more able to lobby in fifty states um, than in municipalities. And, um, so I think I am, I would make a motion to approve this.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
We have a motion in a second.
Okay.
Um, and I was just, I think. There were some questions. I think those have been answered. All those in favor?
Ms. Ujikusa?
Hi.
Ms. Abbott?
May.
Mr. Bunnemeyer?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Ms. Guyer?
Hi. Motion passes six to one. Thank you all. Okay. Uh, let's move on to new business, uh, number six. Portsmouth Lions Club requests for a Memorial Park bench on Hope Park. Mr. Hamilton?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this is just a simple, um, a request for a bench at Mount Hope Park that would go on side of the one that was did back in October, November timeframe. The Lions Club has raised fund for a longtime member, Mr. Jim DeCasta, passed away recently. Uh, I think it's a great opportunity to recognize his long, uh, volunteerism here in town. Also, the fact that he was a structural engineer and built bridges, they thought it'd be a place for, for him, Mount Hope Bridge. And, and it will work with a DPW to get it to work. And I'll second Mr. Ryan, Dr. Ryan, move to approve.
Okay. Any discussion? Comments?
May I jump in? May I jump in, please? This is Gary Cross, town planner. I've been operating, I've been managing the, uh, bench program for many years. Um, that typically what happens is somebody applies for a bench and, um, I'm sorry, it's something is typically somebody applies for a bench. Um, I give them the parameter, the, my spiel, and they send me a check. Typically, it's been for Park Avenue and we split the cost and, and spent and paid for the, um, installation in this one bench in particular that you referred to. Um, the cost, um, was, we asked the cost to be borne by, the full cost to be borne by the, um, the applicant. And, um, that was about twenty-five hundred bucks. I was just curious, Mr. Hamilton, if the Lions Club knew what the cost was. And if they want to go ahead, what they should do is contact me and send me a check for, uh, uh, and I will figure out what the exact cost is. Send me a check, uh, made out to the town of Portsmouth and I will order the bench and, um, uh, get the process moving forward.
I will, I will touch with them in a morning and do just that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. So we have a, a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Ms. Ujikusa?
Hi.
Ms. Abbott? Ms. Abbott?
Hi.
Mr. Bunnemeyer?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Dr. Guyer?
Hi. Motion passes seven zero. Okay. Let's move on to, uh, new business number seven. Solar ordinance proposed revision and request revisions be forwarded to the planning board for an advisory opinion.
All right. Um, I put on a headset to see if you guys can hear me better. Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Okay. Good. Um, so we, a couple of months, a few months ago, we had a letter from Grow Smart RI with suggestions and recommendations for how to improve our solar ordinance. Um, we forwarded that to the planning board for an advisory opinion, but that is, does not, was not a formal proposal for an ordinance change. So what I did, I went through the comments that we got from Grow Smart and their recommendations and you know, redlined our existing solar ordinance with the suggestion that, suggestions that they gave us and with feedback from, from residents and would like to submit a formal proposal for review by the planning board and have a public hearing per our zoning ordinance guidelines for making a zoning amendment change. I do have one change to my red lines. On the last page, there is a, um, reference to the town of Exeter that is still remaining and should, um, read town of Portsmouth, obviously, on the bottom left there. The, the red text on the bottom left, but.
Okay.
Um, so I, I propose this for discussion with the counselors, but I would like to, to submit it on behalf of Portsmouth residents to the, the planning board to initiate a zoning amendment change. Or zoning ordinance change. Apologize. I don't know the right lingo.
I'll second the floor to the, uh, planning board for, um, advisory opinion.
Okay. Uh, any questions, comments? Uh, hold on. We have is there, there's, is there a hand up?
There is one hand up, yes.
Okay.
Christian.
Christian.
Hi, guys. This is my first time. Can, can everyone hear me okay on there?
Yes.
Okay. So this is my first time doing a larger Zoom conference. Seven, nine, Union Street. Um, I was just looking at some of the edits, uh, that you made and I think, well, that biased and I kind of agree with a lot of these here, but, um, what kind of makes me a little bit nervous, I guess, is a lot of them pertain to all the residential zoning. Um, if you look over into the, the commercial zoning, it moves right into the M, which then moves to the that needs to be permitted by the approval of the, uh, the planning board. I happen to have a personal red, like a, a private residence, obviously, um, that abuts commercial zoning. Um, and I'm just kind of wondering if maybe we could look into something of like a committee that kind of even represents people that fall into that, that category and, and also other residents, uh, that are concerned with some of the the solar development that's going on. Um, I, I happen to own a landscape company and I fully agree with a lot of the fertilization comments that were made earlier on. Um, and my property is extremely close to a watershed, so I would agree with a lot of that stuff. And specifically the, the edit. Uh, let's see what page is it on? It is in section G. One, uh, D, where it says, in no case shall more than twenty percent of the area inclusive of inter row and panel collector spacing covered by the solar panels to be uncleared woodlands. Um, in no case, the total area of cleared woodland exceed twenty thousand square feet. Um, I, I think even with the Save the Bay comments, and we can all kind of unanimously agree that I, I just have spoken with many residents and whether it be experts or, you know, everyone else involved, I don't see how we could even begin to consider a plan that would involve clearing more than twenty percent of, of woodland, um, for solar panels. It just from preserving water to reducing fertilization and nitrogen phosphorus impacts into the waterways and, and everything else. I mean, that just, that one seems kind of like a, a no brainer, but that's kind of my two cents. I'm hoping that we might be able to, you know, include, include that, so.
Okay. Thank, thank you for those comments. Um, Christian. So we, a motion in a second. Um, there's been some discussion and, and I do, I do concur with, with sending this back. Uh, you know, sending this over to the planning for, for their advisory opinion. Uh, I, I do believe that, uh, you know, maybe some of these issues have already vetted through the, through the prior process. So I'd be curious uh, to see what, uh, what their take is on certain things. Um, I, you know, I, I also think we have to be respectful for all property owners, um, you know, and, and making sure that we're fair and reasonable with, with how parcels are developed and not being so restrictive that you completely eliminate any possibility on, on certain parcels. Um, you know, and, and that's something that I think we, we also have to be cognizant of. And I totally defer to the planning board and we will let them make their recommendations.
I would like. Oh, sorry. Wait, I just want to interject. What you, what you doing here? This is a proposed we, the council adopted an ordinance last year, solar ordinance. This is a proposal coming, if, if the council goes to do this, it's a proposal for an amendment to the ordinance, several amendments coming from the council. So the council's initiating a proposed zoning amendment and it's going to come back to the council to be heard. So it's, it's not, this is not like last time when it was send the Grow Smart letter to the planning board and see if they have any comments. This is, this is a specific set of amendments that the council would be proposing, uh, to initiate the props, process for a proposed amendment. And then it'll be coming back to the council after notices in the paper for a public hearing. It's when it did, there's a lot more, this, this initiates the minimum process, not just sends it to the planning board to look at.
All right. Then, thank you for that clarification.
And if I'm correct, uh, Mr. Gavin, I believe the, the timeline is that it's supposed to come back for a public hearing within sixty-five days. Correct. So I guess the June fourteenth date is, would be within sixty-five days when we're going to be advertising for those other hearings for zoning changes? Would it be appropriate to have it at the same time? Would it be appropriate to have it at the same time?
That would, it's, it's a, it's, it's a request for amendment to the zoning ordinance, so yes, we'll do that.
I'll, I'll add a couple of comments to, to my thoughts here. I think if you read the Grow Smart RI letter, they made some, some very good points and some excellent recommendations. I have taken their recommendations and just translated them into text from an ordinance. Most of the text came from other town ordinances, like for example, the, the, the specific item that Christian pointed out with the woodland clearing areas, they, that came from the Little Compton zoning ordinance. There are sections here from the town of Exeter. I think the, the important thing to note, to address your comment, Mr. Aguirre, is that in industrial, in light industrial, commercial and heavy industrial, smaller solar energy systems are, are still allowed. The larger ones have to go through the same like, what's it called? Major land development process that we currently have. I think it's important to note that in residential zones, they really shouldn't be allowed. A solar farm is a power plant. It's a, you know, it's a revenue generating activity that doesn't really belong in a residential area on an island like ours where we're so limited with housing and space. I think we need to be cognizant of that. Anybody that loans a large parcel that's currently residentially owned, does that have the option of applying for a zoning change if they want to turn it into a solar farm and produce uh, energy on a mass scale? So we're not really restricting what people can do with their properties. We're just protecting the residents of Portsmouth and the, the zoning that we have spent a lot of time developing and residential should be residential and we the changes do add more protections for, for example, residential properties that do a but, a but, a light industrial or a commercial by adding extra buffers and whatnot. So that was the rationale. And I think when the Grow Smart letter was presented to us, there was unanimous consent across the counselors that it, the ordinance would benefit from some amendments based on their, their suggestions.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I, I was, I guess I, I, as I misunderstood or I misinterpreted this. I thought that these suggestions would go back to the planning board for rec, for review. I don't endorse these recommendations and not all of them. And so I, I would, I'm opposed to that. I'm gonna, I'm just gonna say right now, I'm, I'm not going to support this as it's presented, so. Uh, I, I was under the impression it was going to go to the planning board for further review. If this is, I don't stand behind this as a council, so.
Yeah, but that is what's happening though. If the planning board comes back and says, yeah, we're all for this or we're not, it's still up to the council. We're asking for their recommendations based on the changes that Ms. Abbott has made.
Correct.
Could still make changes and tweak things like two hundred feet is too much for me. A hundred feet is plenty.
I, I, I agree and I respect that, but I think what is presented here is this would be our endorsed recommendation for revisions to the ordinance. Is that correct, Mr. Gavin?
Yes, but it's not a, it goes to the planning board for their review and they review item by item and then vote whether they want to keep it or, or reject it. Feel free to correct me, Mr. Gavin, but this is how I understand the process. Uh, this is a proposal that goes to them. They review it. They review each item and vote on whether they want to keep it or not keep it, or whether they endorse it or don't endorse it. It's not a all or nothing proposal. It's a, a list of recommended changes. So if you have suggestions, maybe we should discuss them now and we can edit the proposal that goes to the planning board. Um, I think there is, are a lot of valid recommendations and you might not agree with one of them, but that, that doesn't you know, make the whole proposal invalid.
No, but your point was you mentioned that you, you reviewed the um, Grow Smart recommendations and that was forwarded to the planning board. They didn't take any action. Your interpretation is you went to different ordinances and selectively picked out specific ordinances. You did, you said that because you said you took one from Little Compton. You said you took one from Exeter. So you're, it's almost like you're, you know, you're picking some restrictions here. I don't know what those other ordinances have. And, and so I'm just saying that I, I would not want this to be a misrepresentation to the planning board that I endorse this if I refer it to them as is. It should, I thought that they were going to review this on the merits of it, not an endorsement from the town council that I support all of these recommendations. I, that's just, maybe it's semantics, but according to Mr. Gavin, this is the proposed changes to the ordinance by the town council. Correct?
It is. Introduce yours, initiating the process for consideration of proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance. It will still come back to the council as the legislative body to decide based on input from the planning board and based on input, input from the public at another public hearing after a series of advertisements in the paper. And then the council would make the ultimate legislative decision whether or not to adopt the proposed amendment.
No, I, I, I get it. I just, uh, I don't want it to be, in, in my opinion, if this goes to the, to the planning board, it's with the endorsement that the town council is behind these specific changes. And so I didn't go through and, and make suggestions on each and every one. Um, because I do think, yeah, maybe some things are, are, are valid, but I'm not a big, you know, I, I spent a lot of time on the zoning board. A two-hundred-foot setback, you know, that's, 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 uh, that's pretty excessive. In my opinion, it's my opinion, everybody, you know, is entitled to their opinions, so. You know, I, I think, I, I, listen, the council can do what the council decides to do. I just.
To, to me, Mr. President, would, I don't see this as we're endorsing changes. We're endorsing the right of a council to bring forth these changes. Then we can make whatever changes we want. I mean, it takes four people to make changes.
Yeah. Correct, Mr. Hamilton, and I appreciate that. I think the clarification is very helpful. I think there's a couple of things here to point out. The letter that we got from Grow Smart, we did send to the planning board for an advisory opinion. Um, we didn't get an advisory opinion. So this is a, another way, another avenue to try to, to get a serious advisory opinion and a serious consideration of this proposal. And two, there has been overwhelming outcry from the community for updates to our solar ordinance and I think it's, it behooves us to respond to that and try to address some of those concerns. And, and these proposals address a lot of these concerns and we can take another serious look at it and try to tweak our solar ordinance so it's more in line with the, the priorities of our residents.
Yeah, and Mr. President, I would, I would add that I, I, I think it's a mischaracterization of what, uh, Counselor Abbott has done to, to make it seem like we asked the planning board for something. They didn't give us anything, so she took it upon herself to do something utterly different. In fact, I think we, and I, I along with her, thought that what we did last time by giving the letter to the planning board would bring us to this more formal process that we're now going to enter because she's put it on the agenda the way she's put it on. So it isn't that she's doing something opposed. Is that fair? So it's, this is just just taking the procedural step necessary to make the planning board move this forward in a more formalized way so that the ordinance change can happen. That's all that's happening. Um, I, I, I don't think, yeah.
I fully support the process. I just, in my opinion, based on what Mr. Gavin said, was that these are being recommendations from the council. So we're going to vote potentially seven, zero, six, one, six, to support these recommendations. I, I support them taking a review. I don't necessarily support in these recommendations. So as long as that's absolutely clear to the, to the planning board that I do not endorse, you know, a two-hundred-foot setback. I don't.
You did, however, vote to support and supported sending the letter from Grow Smart RI, which included that setback to the planning board for an opinion. So this is really just formalizing that process.
Possibly. Uh, again, I fully intended to support sending this for an advisory opinion and maybe this is semantics, but I did not think that this was a, a you know, that the council is standing behind all of these recommendations. I mean, I, I don't stand behind all of these recommendations. That, that's, that's my point. So.
The, the vote would be the council is sending a proposal to the planning board to initiate the process for review and the process will then just take, take place in the normal fashion and it'll come back to the council and the council will then decide based on the information at the public hearing, what it wants to do at that point. It's not.
Well, that, that I support. Which is what I said. Okay, I think it's pretty clear.
Uh, Mr. President, before you go, it's another hand up for Mr. Littleton.
For who? I'm sorry?
Mr. Littleton has his hand up.
Okay.
Or had his hand up. It disappeared.
And do it. Is there anything in the comments? Maybe? No?
No, his hand up that it disappeared.
All right. Okay, well. Uh, we had a motion and.
Now, Ms. Yonkin isn't.
Yonkin. All right, let's go to Ms. Yonkin.
Hello, um, this is Robin Yonkin, forty-nine West Passage Drive. I just want to comment and thank Daniella Abbott for her efforts. And I think I speak for more than just myself when I say that it's greatly appreciated that you are taking the um, people who, the residents who live in Portsmouth into consideration and moving this forward. So I'm just thanking you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Yonkin. Okay. So we have a motion and a second to refer these recommendations to the ordinance changes to the planning board. All those in favor?
And advertise for a public hearing. Mr. Gavin, do we have to include that in the motion?
Uh, that's, that's automatically part of the process to.
Okay.
Going to come back to the public hearing. If you want to set it now for June, as you did for the other request.
Yes, I'd like to set it for June fourteenth, please. Is that the date?
That is our first meeting in June. All those in favor?
Ms. Jufusa?
Hi.
Ms. Abbott?
Hi.
Bunnery?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Brad Yar?
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. Okay. Let us move on to request approval for the Parks and Recreation and Open Space Master Plan bid selection. Bulk or?
Good, good evening, your honorable counsel. The bid evaluation team, hello.
We got you.
Okay, can you hear me? Everyone can hear me? Hello?
Yes, we got you.
Okay, good evening, your honorable counsel. The bid evaluation team has selected the Horsley Witten Group to conduct the Parks Recreation and Open Space Master Plan. The evaluation was based on capability, capacity and experience, project understanding, performance record, project management, public presentation and outreach and the cost. The company received the highest total points from all four members of the team. We request your approval on our selection. Thank you for your consideration.
Into approve for.
Seconded.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further questions? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Ms. Jufusa?
Hi.
Ms. Abbott?
Hi.
Mr. Bunnery?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Brad Yar?
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. Okay. Next, we have the Sandy Point Beach fees. Ms. Bulk again and Mr. Kelly?
Okay.
Your honorable counsel. Daily non-resident beach fees have not been increased since two thousand and fourteen. I am requesting an increase for daily beach fees. My recommendations, Monday through Thursday would be fifteen dollars. Friday, Saturday, Sunday and holidays would be twenty. And a four-pack, the four-pack passes, uh, we would increase to fifty dollars. Thank you for your consideration.
I will with the recommendation as presented.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Question. All those in favor?
Ms. Jufusa?
Hi.
Abbott?
Hi.
Mr. Bunnery?
Hi.
Hamilton?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Mr. Brad Yar?
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. Okay. Now we are moving on to the Ry-Rac contract fiscal year twenty-two dash twenty-three renewal. Mr. Rayner?
President, Council, the Ry-Rac Solid Waste Recycling Services Agreement is due to expire June thirtieth. And a new agreement is up for your review and approval. As noted earlier tonight, uh, the tipping fees will remain at forty-seven dollars per ton uh, through the next year. It will increase in FY twenty-three, it will be four dollars a ton. If we don't sign this agreement, uh, obviously we can still use Ry-Rac, but our tipping fee will go to ninety dollars a ton. So I respectfully ask for your approval to sign this agreement with Rhode Island Resource Recovery Corporation.
We'll do approve.
Second.
Just one quick question. We, we don't have, but can't send our anywhere.
I couldn't hear you, Ms. Hamilton.
That's all right. Never mind. That, just, we can't send our trash anywhere else. We don't have a choice but to sign it.
Correct.
There's always the bay and I never said that. Mr. Rayner, I, I have a question. Um, this, this contract would not in any way be affected or, or would affect any agreement the town would enter in to, for instance, decided to uh, have a contract for a townwide pickup, curbside pickup.
Yes and no. It would, uh, the vendor, if, if we were going to curbside pickup, uh, the vendors will be required to take the trash to Ry-Rac, which is what ninety-nine seven would do. Uh, there is a possibility that we would get a vendor that would want to take the trash to uh, somewhere else, uh, Massachusetts perhaps. Uh, that's always a possibility. Uh, but we would have to state in the RFP that the trash would have this, it would be required to put in the RFP that we have a contract with Ry-Rac, uh, when it expires and how long we would have to take the trash to Ry-Rac. But this, this is only a two-year contract. Uh, so I, I, I don't, I think it's too early to worry about that right now because it's going to take about eighteen months, two years to get to another form of waste disposal in worst of the best, what we choose to do.
Thank you, Mr. Rayner.
Okay, so we had a, a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Ms. Jufusa?
Hi.
Ms. Abbott?
Hi.
Mr. Bunnery?
Hi.
Ms. Hamilton?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Mr. Brad Yar?
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. And next, we will move on to approval of the facilities management bid. Mr. Rayner?
Yes, Mr. President, Council, again, uh, the responses to the joint schools in town, the request for proposals for facilities management services uh, have been received and evaluated. Um, the evaluation is included with the package, uh, in the school memo that will be presented to the school community tomorrow. Um, the evaluation committee has selected Airmark Management Services as the winning bid proposal based on the evaluation criteria top line in the RFP. Um, I would note that, uh, we would keep the same agreement that the, the facilities contract is split between the school and the town. School pays eighty percent, town pays twenty percent. And overall, the total cost, uh, that was, uh, proposed by Airmark represents almost a fifteen percent decrease, uh, in the current twenty-twenty-one cost. So we respectfully request that you approve, uh, the, a three-year contract with, uh, Airmark with Facilities Management Services.
Um, approve the agreement with Airmark Management Services.
Second.
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 We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Ms. Jufusa?
Hi.
Ms. Abbott?
Hi.
Mr. Bummer?
Hi.
Hamilton?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Mr. Aguirre?
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. On to components.
Second.
All the favor?
Ms. Jufusa?
Hi.
Abbott?
Hi.
Mr. Bummer?
Hi.
Hamilton?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Aguirre?
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. Next, have future meetings as we process April 26th, April 27th, April 28th, and April 29th. So we have our, it's that time of year, folks. That's everything.
Mr. President, go to bed.
Okay.
Mr. Fitzmorris, that question, his hand was up.
What, what's that? I'm sorry?
Mr. Fitzmorris had his hand raised.
And I missed it?
No.
I'm where's Mr. Fitzmorris?
I'm here, Mr. President. Larry Fitzmorris, 50 Kristen Court. I request a report on the executive session conducted May 22nd, please. Sorry, March 22nd.
Okay, I'll have to report that out at the next meeting.
All right, sir, thank you.
You're sorry about that. What's that?
About the last.
Of the, the last executive meeting, I think we ended up going back after the meeting.
Nothing changed.
I know, but we have to. We have rules. Okay. Uh, thank you for that, Mr. Fitzmorris.
I believe at, at the end of the executive session, you reported out what happened.
Yeah, I don't remember what I reported, and I I'm not savvy enough.
Minutes, but I mean, I don't know that it's appropriate to just, at the end of the, on future meetings, to get a demand from an individual to have you report on something. I mean, I think we complied previously with the Open Meetings Act.
Yeah.
And I don't understand what the, the validity of this request, but.
Okay, well, I'm okay with it. We, we, that was, that meeting was a little odd. But we had to circle back and, and when we, when we did report back, oh, there was nobody really there, so maybe we didn't get captured on the video, so we'll take care of it. Okay. Most of we adjourned.
Second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Jufusa?
Hi.
Ms. Abbott?
Hi.
Mr. Bummer? Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly? Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Aguirre?
Hi. Thank you all. We'll see you on the 26th for budget.
Go to bed, Kevin.
I'm close, I'm close. Thank you all. Good night.